Well, it's pretty serious we get started. I guess. Are you ready for we get started? All right. Well, if everybody would like to stand, we'll start here by with the Pledge of Allegiance. Floyd.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Again, as before we get into our agenda, always a good reminder to review our mission and vision statements. Our vision, to inspire all learners to be engaged and successful. Our mission, provide an enriching environment to meet the needs of all learners. And our core values of respect, integrity, students first, and excellence. So as we go through our agenda tonight, always keep all that in mind and let's always do what's best for our students and our staff. Let's see, we need a motion then to any changes to the agenda whatsoever. I don't believe there is. All right, and we just need a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, Andrew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. No hearing to delegations. Consent items were sent out earlier last or late last week, so hopefully you've had a chance to go through them. Jay, did you get through the invoices?
I did.
Everything was a-okay. All right. Well, Mary Beth never disappoints us there. It's always usually ours, so. But any questions on the consent items that were sent out? Or Joe, you have anything you'd like to say about them?
No, I will go through a financial review as part of my report a little bit, kind of year-to-date, where we're at, forecast, looking at some four and five-year models. We'll do that in my report.
Okay.
I will motion to approve the consent items.
Thanks, Ray. Do we have a second?
Second, had a motion.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any discussion further? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll get started then with the heart of our agenda, I guess, there, the communication to the board. I know Matt Gillespie is on board with us.
Hi, Matt. Can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
All right, we are ready to go. So they have the board packet information that you sent in, in their packets, in their information today. I don't know if you wanted to share that tonight, or you wanted me to share from this end, or how you want to do that.
If you could allow me to share, Joe, then good.
I think you're ready. I think you can.
Okay. Just a second. Okay. So for those of you that have this in your packet, you can either follow along your packet or look up on the screen. But what this first page is showing you is the final version of the breakout between the refinancing component and the new construction project part of it. So I think you're all aware that you're issuing bonds for two different purposes. One, to refinance the two old sales tax bonds that you already had, and then also to come up with some funds for new projects, the concessions, restrooms, et cetera. So this is showing that breakout in the left side, although from this point forward, we really don't need to keep track of it anymore. We don't care, because it just becomes one bond, which is what the yellow column is showing. So that's really the annual payments or the annual principal amounts that you see there. And just to the right of that, here where I am circling with my cursor, that's where you see the interest rate. So this is the interest rate that Iowa State Bank determined to assign. Obviously, we're way ahead of the schedule. We weren't really going to be taking proposals until later this spring, but Iowa State Bank was willing to commit to an interest rate today, which is good for you, because that way it takes out the uncertainty of what would happen if interest rates were to rise. Obviously, they could drop as well, but they wouldn't probably drop much lower, because they're pretty much as close to as low as you could possibly get. This 1% interest rate is extremely attractive. We took proposals just today on another district that was issuing bonds, very similar to what you are looking at here. And those rates that we received for that school district ranged from 1.13 to 1.30%. So this 1% is still very attractive. And of course, the bank isn't actually going to close on the transaction until May. And the real reason for that, kind of twofold. One, you don't necessarily need the money right now for the new project, because we're in the middle of winter, so that project's not going to begin to unfold. But more importantly, for tax reasons, you can't pay off one of the old bonds until July 1 anyway, and you couldn't close on this transaction less or more than 90 days prior to that date, because of Internal Revenue Service rules. So because it wasn't hindering your ability to fund your project, we just set the closing date for early May, so that it kind of solves all of those issues. On the second page, I know this is kind of difficult to see on the screen, but if you can look on your personal copies, this is just the refinancing portion of it alone. So what you see on the far left, these two tables over here, these are the original schedules that were issued back in 2015, when the district issued those bonds. And you can see one of them was at a 2.85% interest rate, the other one at a 2.45% interest rate. So you're taking those debts and taking it down to 1%. The shaded portion is the portion that's being refinanced. And that, the combination of these two things is then transferred over under this orange box. So this is just the two things to the left added together. And then under the yellow box is just that new, excuse me, the refinancing component of today's bond issue. And then in the far, far right column, under that big fat arrow, that's just netting the two things out. So taking the original bond payments minus the new bond payments and showing you what the savings is as a result of transferring that rate to 1%. And that answer to that question is $404,000. So a very significant savings from the refinancing component of the transaction.
And Matt, and then, real quick, in that savings, that's after our expenses to do this, right?
Yep, that's correct. So you can see down at the bottom of this little box, and I prorated those, so that the portion of the new construction part and the refinancing part would have their same ratio of fees associated with it. But those costs, which include your bond attorney, Piper, the company I work for, and United Missouri Bank, the paying agent, those are included in that. So this is after you've paid those costs. So ultimately, you really have paid the cost even for the new money portion of it, and you're still way ahead as far as savings is concerned. This page is just showing you the combined sources and uses. So again, we don't really care too much about the breakout between the refinancing and the new portion. So it's this far, far right column that we're really looking at. And so the total amount of bonds that you're issuing is 8.847 million, of which 6.4 million is being used to pay off the old bonds, and 2.3 million is available for the new project costs that you're going to incur sometime this summer. In the bottom left-hand corner of this page, there's a little note, and that note is saying that Iowa State Bank is allowing you to pay the bonds off at any time with 30 days' notice. So that's very, very attractive. It's probably unlikely that you will choose to pay the bonds off early, since you're paying only 1% interest. If you truly had lots of extra cash sitting around, and you didn't have anything to do with it, which is probably almost laughable, I don't know many schools around the state that don't have needs, but you know, the question becomes, would you really choose to pay off debt that you're only incurring 1% interest on? Or would you instead use that extra cash that you're going to draw up and fund some project, buy some extra buses, or fix a roof, or something like that? But the point is that if you really, truly had extra money, and you didn't have needs that you wanted to dedicate those funds to, you could begin to pay this debt off at any time you want with 30 days' notice. And it doesn't have to be in full. So you could pay off $50,000, $100,000, $500,000, a million, whatever the case is, if you have those extra funds. And you could do that really, you know, over and over and over, if you really had extra money. Most schools that find themselves in that situation, though, if they truly do it, probably only call the bonds maybe once a year, sort of accumulate money, and then make notice to the bank that you're going to pay an extra $300,000 or something like that. So this page is showing you the combined schedule, which again, from this point forward, is all we really care about. We don't need to keep track of the refinancing versus the new money after we are done with the transaction. So you can see annual payments going out through 2030, semi-annual interest payments, very similar to what most municipal bonds are. The total obligation is roughly $1,034,000 a year in principal and interest. On this page is just another form of the savings, so it just shows you that $404,000 number again, in a little bit different format. And then this is, this may be of more interest to the board, not just for today's bond issue, but sort of more globally, talking about sales tax. And again, I know those of you that are looking at it up on the screen, it's quite small to see. But in this top-left corner box, this is showing you a history of your certified enrollment. You're paid sales tax based off of the number of students who physically live inside the school district's boundaries. So these students don't all go to school at Algonah. Some of them open and roll out, and you have other schools, students that open and roll in, and you don't get the sales tax for those students that open and roll in. So this is just resident students, and you see this history from 2001 to 2020, over that time period, which is a random period, there's nothing important about 2001, but you've averaged losing about 18 students a year certified. And for purposes of calculating future estimates, we're assuming that you continue to lose 10 students a year. And that number, we can change anytime we want. It's somewhat random, but it is a number that the district told us to sort of assume that you'd be losing some students, I think to be conservative, just assume that. This call, this box here in the left middle is showing us actual sales tax that have been paid by the district. So from 2005 to 2020, these are actual numbers, and then fiscal year '21, which we're still, of course, inside of fiscal year '21, it's an estimate. But what I find interesting about this, for those of you that maybe have been really worried about COVID, for example, and the impact that might have on sales tax, what we have found, you see in 2019, the average per student across the state paid out in sales tax is $995. And then fiscal year '20, which included about three months' worth of COVID activity, the actual number still went up. It went from 995 to 1,037. So there's a few things that were going on. One, COVID wasn't having as big of an impact as everyone was afraid it might. That's one thing. But another thing is that during fiscal year '20, that was the first year in Iowa where we had a full 12 months of internet sales being taxed. And that's literally just a coincidence, that that happened at the same time as COVID. But the law was changed beginning in July of 2019, actually, I'm sorry, a year before that. And so now we're capturing all of the tax that's paid on internet sales. Well, of course, during COVID, internet sales just sort of skyrocketed in most places, so that really became a benefit. So even during COVID, that number grew. Now fiscal year '21, it is declining, although this is an estimate. This is from the Department of Revenue. They can be wrong, and they will be wrong, because it's just an estimate. It might be slightly higher, it might be slightly lower. They do project it dropping, and that's primarily because of COVID. But still, that 1,016 is above the pre-COVID number of $995. So overall, I think it sort of gives some comfort, I hope, you know, knowing that the tax is very stable. It is the most stable, besides property tax, type of tax that we can have, so a reliable tax source. This table here that's on the left side of the middle, this is showing what might happen if you lose 10 students per year for the next several years and then become stagnant. That's again, just an assumption. But if retail sales and sales tax per student grow at a fairly modest pace, and if that truly happens, then your revenue, where this year it's basically about 1.3 million, would possibly grow to 1.4, 1.5, maybe up to close to 2 million by the time the tax ends. All of that is now 30 years from now. So these things can't be super reliable, because we don't have a crystal ball, but hopefully, we're being conservative enough that they're the type of thing that you can sort of at least plan in a rough way on moving forward. And then the last pages here, you can see there's three pages. This is just a cash flow, combining your sales tax and your pebble together in one big pot of money, and then showing you taking off the bond payments that you have, plus spending $1 million every single year, plus a little bit of inflation, and some cash coming in still a couple more years for the turf field, that some donors are donating, and then what might be your cash balance at any given time. So it's kind of like a checkbook register, I think of it that way. Shows your balance up here in October, then money coming in on the left side of the page, money going out in the middle of the page, and then the balance over on the right. So again, this is not going to be 100% accurate, because we don't have a crystal ball, and good things will happen and bad things will happen over time. But we hope that it's reasonably accurate. And what we see is that if it is accurate, possibly the lowest point that you would have over the next, this particular worksheet goes out for the next 10 years through 2030, excuse me, the low point would maybe be this summer, with a balance of a positive $760,000. And from that point forward, even with the bond payments, it appears that you might have in excess of $1 million, $2 million. Now, are you really going to have that money sitting around? I doubt it, because you have other projects. So you'll very likely go out in some years and spend more than $1 million. You'll fund some other small projects, medium-sized projects, et cetera. So I'm not suggesting that your balance is always going to be growing, and it's going to be above $2 million, and $3 million, and $4 million. But it shows you that you have some cushion, so that you can still fund other things above and beyond the bond payment and this $1 million per year set aside. So any questions about what any of these pages show? I want to do it fairly quickly, but does the board have any questions about the process or the result?
From an existing bond standpoint to the refinance bond, it only changes payoff by a couple months, if I'm reading this correctly, is that accurate?
That is, yeah. Did you hear that question, Matt?
2031.
Yes. So you can see that ultimately, one of the old bonds, the last payment was going to be January of 2030. The other one would have been in July of 2029. And now, these bonds actually extend to July of 2030. Now, you previously couldn't go out to July of 2030, because the law said that the tax is going to end on December 31 of 2029, and that allowed at the time for the last bond payment, for any school in the state, to leave a little later than January 1 of 2030. But now that the law was changed, even though you guys haven't had the revenue purpose statement extension yet, you still now can borrow through July, excuse me, January 1 of 2031, which allowed us, that actually is being extended, not shortened. But that's really, you can kind of attribute that to the new borrowing portion, if you really wanted to. So it's not a significant difference, with a slight, slight extension there, but even with that, still saving $400,000.
There's going to be some fundraising for this phase two project. How would that impact this at all, or what, or would that fit into things?
If there was fundraising for it?
Yeah.
Well, really, we just have a savings of sales tax dollars now.
Okay. Could be allocated towards different projects.
Yeah, towards lots of different projects, or any use of sales tax. Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yeah.
If it's necessary, if whoever it is that's donating the money wants to, you know, be sure that the money's going for this project, you know, they may donate money late this fall, or even next year, who knows? And the bonds have already been issued, will have already been issued, obviously. But if, you can equate it to, if somebody donated $50,000, just think of it as going into your sales tax fund and making a $50,000 payment on these bonds.
Sure, okay.
So it's still, it still can be treated as though it's being used for this project. And of course, it's kind of like a shell, you know, not a shell game in a deceitful way, but you spend $50,000 from the donor's money to make the bond payment that will use $50,000 that you can go on by a school bus with.
Matt talked about the conservative enrollment projection. That's why it is that way, it's very conservative. We don't really anticipate losing 10 per year. We even have the possible chance of our enrollment changing significantly in three years when we, as we continue to study reorganization with Laverne. So very conservative in our outlook for the future.
One other note I forgot to point out, maybe for those of you that are new to the board, or haven't been on the board since 2015, on this particular page, this note, the 2015 B bonds that are being refinanced now, they themselves were refinancing older bonds. So back in 2015, you issued these bonds, and at the time, you saved $543,000. So now, you're saving another $404,000 on top of that, although you are also obviously refinancing the other issue as well. But I think that's important, not just for the board, but for community members, to understand that the school board is being prudent and being diligent with the taxpayers' money. You know, so often, we hear and see people that are just being critical of the school board, or the city council, or whatnot. I mean, literally, just before I got on this call, I was listening to my home school board, Urbandale, they're having a meeting about COVID. And you know, some of the things people were saying, that we're allowed to speak, I just couldn't believe they were saying in a public meeting, but it's, you know, it's just become the norm, I guess, these days. But when people are constantly criticizing the school board for making decision A, B, or C, and it's not what they want, or they just don't think you're doing the right thing, or that you're paying attention, you know, I would argue that these numbers are showing that that's not true. The school board is paying attention, and they are doing good things for the community from a fiscal standpoint. So you have almost $1 million between these two refinancings that you otherwise would have been paying to someone, whether it be your local banks, or a national bank, or whoever bought the bonds originally, that wouldn't be in the school district's pocket. And that's a big deal. So I hope that as board members, you graduate yourselves, but also you make it clear to your patrons that these things are happening.
And the savings were just purely based on lower interest rates, correct?
Correct, yeah. Any other questions for Matt? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, Joe, do you need any help going through the resolutions? Do you think you got that part?
We're good with that. We have all that.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all. Congratulations. And we'll hope you guys stay safe and healthy, and we'll see you the next time.
All right, thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
As Matt mentioned, we'll talk more about that in our resolution down there in 90, when we get to that.
Yep.
Next, Joe, superintendent report.
Yeah, we put together a financial review, you know, just looking at a couple different, you know, key points, key assumptions, I guess, that we wanted to show you on our finances. You know, as you're making decisions, you know, whether that decision is based upon, you know, a facility project, or, you know, the possibility of adding a, you know, adding positions to the district, whatever it is, you know, I think I need to show you where we're at financially and how things look. It starts with this monthly fund report, which I'm going to show you like this, because that's probably a lot easier for you to see. And then in the monthly fund report, the first table that's on the summary sheet, it has our total revenues year-to-date, which would be right here. So $7,932,216. 44% of our revenues have come in to date. It also compares going back four years at the same time, so where we at is 44% year-to-date. This is, that's about how much we usually get in our revenue up to this point. It's more than last year, so you can take a look at that in previous years. Also has our sales tax year-to-date right here, and we've received $794,000 or 47% of our sales tax to date, as well as our management. So just takes a look at some of those. The chart below that shows then your, our expenditures. So our expenditures to date are 39%, so, yep, that's good, right? We want our expenditures lower than our revenues. Also, you'll see like in our sales tax, for example, and management, that our expenditures are higher. And that's because these things will continue to come in, but those aren't necessarily expenses that are monthly. You know, for example, we pay insurance premiums for retired staff out of management. That doesn't continue every month. So the difference between our management revenues and our management expenditures throughout the year will close. Yes?
Is that percentage reflective of the total budget? So 47% for instance, sales tax, that's what's budgeted?
Yes, yes. Same thing with our sales tax, you know, the difference between those will continue to close, you know, throughout the year. So as we go down to our, the next part, the revenue and expense dashboard right here, again, kind of, kind of looking at this first table, first meter, shows our, again, our year-to-date revenues at 43.26%. We had it projected, it would be at 43.91, so we're pretty close. And also, I have in here our top 10 general fund sources. You know, our, our general fund, most of that comes from property taxes. So to date, we've received just under $4 million in property taxes so far in this year. Now, we are certainly a property-rich district. If we, if we weren't, for example, if we didn't have as much valuable farmland as we did, this property tax number would be smaller, and then the second line, the state foundation aid, would be higher. That's the money we get from the state. You know, so really, if we're trying to fill a bucket, the bucket's going to get full. It's a matter of who fills it more, the people of Algonah or the state of Iowa. But it's going to get filled either way. So that, that's kind of a breakdown of what that looks like, if you wanted to see percentage-wise, you know, where's our, our general fund money actually come from? Most of it comes from our local property taxes. The next, kind of a bar graph, again, this is our projected expenditures per year, and this is where we're at, so just an idea of that, this is where we're projected. You know, we, Mary Beth and I, we set projected budgets. Certainly, those were close to them, but just an idea of where we have to go in the year. Our key measures, which I'm going to show you right here, it's a lot easier, a lot easier to see, shows our total unspent authorized budget, which would be right, right there. So we're projected to end the year with $4,492,000 of our unspent authorized budget. Important to note, if you look through the last four to five years, that number has started, you know, maintained to grow. That's a number we do not want to go down, as, as some of you know, we want, that means we're, we're losing, we're losing money. Our board has a goal to maintain an unspent balance ratio of 10%. We're going to be about 20% when we're done. IASV, Iowa Association of School Board, you know, they would say it's acceptable for 5 to 15 to never exceed 25. So we're, we're in that range of where we should be in our UAB ratio. Our general fund, going back and forth here, which is, this is, you know, probably the best summary page of all of them. So what this does, this line right here is our surplus and deficit. See, we're projected to end the year with a surplus this year, as well as next year. Then you'll see, we start to have some rents, which means we're spending more than we're bringing in. But that's intentional in this model. This model here that goes up to fiscal year 2026, I have removed all of the cash reserve that we tax for. We tax for about $1.2 million of cash every year. I have removed that from the budget. And the reason I've removed it is because if you become too solvent, you're not able to tax for that cash anymore. So I've moved that into our management fund, just to show an accurate projection of where we're going to be. Still, you know, our, our fund balance continues to be very, very healthy. You see, it pretty much maintains through all of that. Our UAB grows through all of that. So even taking out all of that cash, we still have very, very healthy finances throughout fiscal year '26. Now, there's, there's things that happen. There's still lots of things that happen, but things look very, very good. I've also made these models with additional staffing, like a director of teacher and learning, which we're going to talk about later tonight. I've also thrown in another additional teacher, just again, to continue to live in the conservative side of where we're at, you know, you You know, you don't have those expenses in there, it looks even, even better. So to give you an idea, if we do that, can we afford it? We can't. Going out through 26, we certainly can't. Any questions on some of those summaries and added plans? It's a lot of stuff. It's a lot of numbers. It's stuff that Mary Beth and I, we sit down together and look at, trying to give you guys a good, kind of just forecast of what it is, and using some of the tools we have to help us do that.
I really like the new format of this, this report here, other than just looking at the tables from Excel. I think it does an excellent job of giving us, painting a better picture.
Yeah.
Clearer picture, and it's, it's very useful and beneficial.
Few years ago, you guys, remember, we forecasted FIVE as a program that we use. We just continue to get better at it, continue to use it more. We can use it on a monthly, ongoing basis now, which is part of a piece to it that we have, so we're hopeful that we can continue to give stuff like this to you.
I think it's, I think it's very beneficial.
What do you use as a projection for supplemental state aid?
Two percent is what I built this one off of. You know, I wrote an article for the paper today, you know, from 2000 to 2010, supplemental state aid went up on average at three point seven-two percent. The average in the last ten years is below two, but we were over two last year, so I built all these on two percent. Also built these on insurance increases of seven percent per year, which I don't, I hope it doesn't go up seven percent per year, but that, that's built into this model. And I hope our supplemental state aid's more than two. We'll have to see.
Any other questions? I think most of this, just like you said, answers a lot of the questions for us right up front, so.
I think our direction we're headed is excellent.
It is very good, you know, and I think that, I'm glad you say that, Jay. I probably should have started with that. You know, we look at, by answer the district, we, things look very good for us. They look good for us on a short-term, annual basis. They also look good projecting out through 26. Also, in here, we do have the sharing incentive dollars that we get from the joint, you know, the resolution of the firm. That money's in here, but it also leaves. It's in here and it's gone. So to show you kind of where we're at, that's, that's why we get that additional dollars, we're not able to keep taxing for that other cash. We take that out then, and then we put it back in. And that money's gone.
Two years ago, it was a little different picture, and it's good to see it. Headed in the right direction.
Most definitely.
Early retirement helped, right?
Early retirement certainly helped. So the annual expenditures for this year, also that's built into next year's, so all of that is built into the models moving ahead. Where we're pretty conservative in the saving projection per teacher that we use, it certainly could be greater than how we build the models.
All right. Any other questions? We'll move on then to our new business. One of the first things to talk about is the position the district is looking at.
Yeah, we have, I linked in the agenda, job description, that we've continued to work on, on the director of teacher and learning. We've called that position curriculum director in some of our discussions that the board has had. It's a position that, you know, as I, as I go out and I spend time in the district, I talk to teachers, I talk to staff, it's, it's something that is lacking. I don't think there's any question about that. I think this position would, would help us provide leadership, help provide vision for our, our planning, our development, our instruction, our curriculum, implementation of assessments, our research components that all lead into our comprehensive school improvement model. It, you know, it's a piece we just simply don't have, and the district hasn't had. As I mentioned, the financial models that I created, I did include this position in there, just so to show that it is something that is affordable, and I think something that would really benefit our, our district quite a bit. Throughout the job description, you can see the responsibilities are, there's a lot of them. You know, I think whenever we create our job, our performance responsibilities, it's always kind of all-encompassing. You know, the strengths of the person and some of their backgrounds will, will probably focus them in certain areas. But it's, it's a position that would work alongside our building principles at all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. You know, aligning our, our curriculum, establishing curriculum review cycles, which we don't currently have, tying together our, our data from assessment with our professional development goals and our professional, professional development initiatives throughout the year. That's, that's simply a connection we don't currently have in the district, and we need to get tighter on. And, you know, the ultimate result of this, this position is, is greater student achievement, greater outcomes for kids. And I think that's where we, what we want to focus on, and where we want to get to with that. Any questions on the job description for the position itself?
Looks like a critical component of educating your kids.
I, I would.
And reading through the job description.
I would agree with you one hundred percent. I think it is critical. I would say staffing lines, the number one objective right now is to find a way to provide this position for our, open air, our students.
It's been needed for a long time, and I'm not sure if people really noticed it, but it's been needed for many years. The last spring dropped full circle. Doesn't really get whole, and we have no choice. So it's time, it's beyond time, it's the right decision.
How much, so, I mean, you know, we have our, our TLC and our, you know, people that are working with the teachers, you know, new ways to teach the students, you know, technology in the classroom, those sorts of things. I mean, I, I agree. I mean, the reason I think I'm in favor so much of this is just, you know, Tom's experience with this and just the insight, and like you said, last spring, you know, which caught everybody off guard, and it was really nobody's fault. But how much of this is so, if a student had to be gone for, you know, six months because of health issues, you know, say they were getting treatment somewhere else and, you know, were moved. I mean, one of the things last spring that was, again, it was, I'm not pointing fingers, I mean, that was nobody's fault, so if you're listening, don't take this the wrong way. But a lot of that was, you know, you had closure in March, you know, what should we be doing with our kids? You know, different teachers were different, you know, comfort levels as far as communicating and sending things out, you know, and that was just a new thing. But like, you know, so your third grader, or your fourth grader, or your tenth grader, this is what they should be learning in these subjects at this time, and here's what you could do if you could be here.
Yeah.
I mean, how much, I mean, that's, I mean.
Yeah, it's a, it's a huge part of this. That's a scope and sequence, you know, a scope and sequence that exists on a grade level and in a content area. We do not have a scope and sequence that's, that's complete, that exists in that way, that, you know, in third grade, social studies, or third grade reading, or whatever level, whatever grade, and that, that would be a big part of this.
That would, because like, when the closure happened, you know, this third grade teacher was sending out this material, this different section was sending out this, and it seemed just, you know, based on, but this would bring it to a uniform.
Cohesive.
Cohesive. This is what's going to happen here.
And something that is tough for us right now is, you know, being consistent in our instruction and our curriculum from grade level to grade level is something we need to get better at. That, that's why we need a position like this, to develop that cohesiveness, to develop that, that consistency in how we, how we teach our kids and content-wise, so we're getting them to where we're wanting to be.
And where do you see this? I mean, there's, this is obviously going to be, you know, a large task for this person because we don't have it and we are lacking in this area. I mean, you know, as far as different things, you know, bringing it to a, you know, I mean, AP classes are AP classes, you know, we use Iowa Lakes a lot with that sort of stuff. But I mean, how would you see more electives and different things being brought in with this, or not?
Well, I'm not sure, you know, it, it will certainly, I think, as we start to, you know, look vertically, content-wise, you know, whether it's the, the high school science department or whatever it is, looking at what they're teaching and where we're teaching it at, it could, could create those opportunities. Additional electives than what we have, that, that's always staffing. So it would, it would be a balance there. But I, I think it certainly creates opportunities for us to look much closer at our, our instruction and what we're teaching, how we're teaching it, and when we're teaching it, to get better at those things. You know, I, I don't think there's any question that this position's put in place for greater, greater achievement, greater achievement for our kids. It could possibly lead to different type of electives.
In this, scope-wise, K-12?
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
So that's a pretty tall task, right?
Indeed, yeah.
In aligning, you know, he said, how long would you, and, and, I mean, if it's still kind of in the plans, no worries, but how long would you anticipate being able to really tackle something like that? I would think it would take several years.
I think it probably would too. I, but I think an important part of this is, many of these tasks are in partnership with our building principals. It's them working side-by-side with our principals, not necessarily just on their own.
Gotcha.
So hopefully, a lot of wheels can be put in motion collaboratively. So, but you're right, it, it takes time to see and complete programs being put in place. But I, I think we'll find, we'll find areas to work on right away. We'll find holes in our data right away, and those will be the things that we want to work on first and work from there.
We talked in our review, just the qualifications and what it needed to be, I think that's important to highlight.
Yeah.
You know, we, you know, we want somebody who has experience in this. We don't want somebody to be learning on the job, you know.
Yeah, we certainly want teacher leaders, aspiring, you know, curriculum-type people. We put our, our qualifications on this as a master educator license or professional administrator license, which is preferred. This position does not have, they do not evaluate any people. They work alongside of the building principals. The building principals evaluate the instructional coaches in their buildings. Still, I evaluate the director of teaching. But you're right, we do want someone who has experience in, in teacher leadership-type position, in curriculum, instructional strategies, assessment, that can come in, work with our administrators, work with our teachers in those areas.
And you feel like we're getting it early enough in our creative standpoint, we'll get some top talent, but?
I do. I think we are right, we're at the perfect time. This, this is one of these things, we'll, we'll be a little bit before, I think, when most of them come out. I think we'll be great, great candidates.
And again, this is something our district has needed, like Tom said, this person showed last year, and it's time we move forward with this, in my mind, at least. So, any other questions? Well, to move forward with this, we need a motion then to.
And then just the salary for this too. I mean, I know it's not hard and fast, it's going to be based on the applicant and the experience level and different things, but you had mentioned in our review meeting, it's going to be basically administrator level.
Yeah. Where we would bring a principal in.
And that's what you built into your models.
Right, just what we've built into the models.
I would give the motion to approve the director of teaching and learning position.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrea. Any further discussion?
I just want to mention too, I mean, it's, anytime we hire a new position, we've, we've been caught in the recent past to have, you know, we created a couple of positions that we were cutting a couple of years later. And I think, you know, people that followed that situation at home, we're going to be a little apprehensive of us creating a new position. But I think it's, you know, as Joe has outlined here, that it is affordable. Our financial situation with the early retirements and different things is different than it was three years ago.
Yeah, and I, that's, Brad, I think it's really important to bring it up how you did. It's, it's the reason things tonight went the order that they did. You can't make this decision without hearing the discussion we had previously. And that's why I wanted to show you guys financially where we're at as a district, and where we project to be in five years from now.
And the reality is, is we do have reorganization money that's coming in.
Yep.
You know, and we're, as, as Joe mentioned, we're going to have a surplus. And there is no reason for our school to carry a surplus if we can benefit kids, and that's where it really comes from.
And sustainable.
Sustainable, yeah.
I believe that, yep. Good, good discussion. We do have a motion in a second. Is there any further, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, another important topic to continue to talk about.
Yeah, we have our early retirement application. Last, last fall, the board passed an early retirement program for teachers for two years. Last year, we had nine teachers take advantage of that, eight, eight teachers take advantage of that. This year, we had another take eight who were eligible. We have eight teachers who have applied for the early retirement program. They are Diana Bowe, who's currently our middle school band teacher, Lori Ludwig, who's a special education teacher, Jill Cook, first grade teacher, Anita Gearhart, fourth grade teacher, Janet Bottler, high school special education, Mary Haberkamp, elementary heart and tag, Phil Stein, high school science, and Jim McMahon, middle school social studies teachers. Over 192 years of service to the Algonah district from, from these staff members, they've made a tremendous impact, a lasting impact on thousands of children in our district, and we're, we're extremely grateful for what they have done for us. But I do recommend the approval of these eight early retired retirees.
Thank them for their service, and make a motion to accept their approval.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have a second?
One second.
All right, Brad. We have a motion in a second. Again, thank them for all their years of service and their 192 years combined, wow. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last month, you remember, we talked about the APTG.
APTG, presented to you guys last month. This is, again, an area we want to get better at. We want to get better at our ability to communicate with our, with our people, with our community, with our, our families. APTG, it can help us do that. They can help create better modes of communication between our districts, our district and our families, integrating a school app, the Algonah Community School District app and our website as one. I think it's just something that we really need. It has an annual fee of $9,500, which is paid out of PEPAL, not out of general fund. We've talked a lot about general fund tonight. We've also talked about PEPAL with Matt, which is very, very healthy as well. But I do recommend the approval of APTG, creating and hosting the Algonah Community School District app and website.
In your research of them, talk to, obviously, other people who use them, and there were positive feedback?
Great feedback. Number of schools in Iowa currently using APTG, tremendous communication with, with their families. I've also talked directly with some of those schools, how easy is it to use, you know, where's our role in this? Really easy in the integration process, really easy to push out information, which is really what we're, what we're looking for. So I, I think it is, it's the right company for us, you know, that fits our needs.
Good.
And, and will the plan be, I don't know if you need to go so far as policy, but setting the expectations and behavior to everybody? Because to me, that was the biggest thing, right? And one of them, I like the fact that it updates the website, because the website's pretty stagnant, but it should be pretty live.
Right.
But the other component, I think, is consistency in, in where you're going for your information, right? Because we got Facebook, and we got remind, and we got email, and we got being on network, and we got a lot going on all over the place.
It does create that consistent. And the, the thing that, and this is a piece that I really like, you can still continue to get your stuff from Facebook and Twitter if you want, but, but you don't have to. It'll all be driven. It'll all be driven from this, and I think that's the beauty of it, we're not, if that's how someone wants to get their communication, it still exists there, but all of those things will always go to this app, to our live feed, to our newspaper.
So you know, that's kind of your one source of truth and then you can use the other.
App on your phone, push notification right to it, it'll tell you everything you need to know.
So we probably have, using estimates, 35% of the people in the community have kids in school, 65 do not. And I understand this application will reach those 35% quite strong. Without the other people, that we still need their input, their attendance at concerts, games, bond issues, et cetera.
Yeah, I think, you know, those people, we got to continue to communicate with, with how we do now, whether that's me talking at a service group or an article that I put in paper or communications on the radio. Brian helps us with a lot, or our website, which we'll still have, I think we have a lot of those things in place and the people who use our newspaper, use their radio and use those forms of communication, we have them. It's the, some of our other people who happen to be our constituents in the school that we need to reach on a more consistent basis, I think the app provides the opportunity to do that.
Did we talk, did she talk about how long development?
Yeah, 60, 60 days is where it'll start and, you know, I think they would say by, in March to April, we'd be up for more.
Right, yeah, it was a wonderful presentation last, I think we all felt good about the way to get that out in one, and I know in our board agenda review, when you had to make a decision on school that day, that would have made it easy to send that out too as a communication, so, all right, we need a motion to approve the APTG agreement.
I make a motion to approve the APTG agreement.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I can, I can, Todd's got, Todd's seconded then, or motion and a second, do we have any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, we all know Matt Kalopsi was talking to us just briefly and we're at that point now to talk about the...
Yeah, this is where we need the resolution directing the sale of approximately $8,847,000 school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue and refunding bond series in 2021. In green is what the resolution needs to be, if you're on the general information. That's, and then we'll...
Yep. I would read it, but I don't have green on mine, so, if somebody has green.
So moved.
I got, do you want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I make a motion to directing the sale of approximately $8,847,000 school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue and refunding bonds.
Do you have a motion then, Jay, do you want a second?
I'll second that, all right.
Thank you. Motion and second, now we've had a lot of discussion on this and we had a lot of, more information earlier from Matt, is there any other discussion? Hearing none then, all in favor say aye. Do we need that a roll call, I'm sorry, just thought of that too, I'll let you go ahead, Mayor Beth.
Yes, Owen?
Yes.
Newgin?
Yes.
Luwaji?
Yes.
Lumba?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Backward.
He was backward.
Motion carries, head through our votes, I'm first. All right, I know, next topic we've been discussing over a little bit, over a few months, but it's brought to the table now to just continue discussing a classified retirement program.
Yeah, in the fall of 2019, the board of directors passed an early retirement program for our teaching staff, that would be in place for two years, we're in year two of that, tonight you guys approved the second year of those applicants. That program did not include any classified staff. Currently, the Algonquin Community School District does not have a retirement policy in place for any of our employees. Policy meaning ongoing, existing policy. This proposal would also not be a policy, this would also be a program that would be in place for this year and next. This program, like the teacher early retirement program, could always be reinstated by the board. The board always has, has complete control of whether or not this program is in place, just like a early retirement program for teacher, as well as the qualifications and benefits of the program. As a district, you know, we want to be the best employer that we can be. We want our district to be a place that people want to work and people don't want to leave. And I think this program would help to provide some of, some of our employees who have had longevity in the district, who have done a lot of wonderful things for us in a way that it doesn't currently provide for. This proposal, there would be two groups of eligible employees. The first group would be full-time, 12-month staff with at least 12 years of service in the district. That's the same as the teacher program, if you're wondering where some of those years come from, that's what the teacher program is as well. That's one group of eligible employees. The second group of eligible employees would be classified staff with 25 years of experience in the district. Staff who do not require certification, that's what we call the definition of classified and do not work full-time as in the summer. All the eligible staff would need to be 55, honorary for June 30th of this year or June 30th of next year, that's when they apply. The benefit in this program would be a cash stipend. Cash stipend of 1% of the employee's salary of the previous year multiplied by years of service. So if they worked in the district for 20 years, it would be 20% of their salary. If they worked in the district 25%, 25 years, it'd be 25% of their salary from the previous year. Capped at 25, it doesn't go any higher than that. Also, part of that cash stipend would be $25 per unused sick day. Many of our staff probably have 100 unused sick days, so $2,500 or so there. I'm anticipating the total cost of this program for two years would be around $85,000. That would be, again, money not from the general fund, that would be money that comes from our management fund.
Do we want to explain for our people maybe watching when they watch it later or whatever, or listening tonight, what classified means?
Yeah, yep, classified is any staff we have that do not require a certification.
This would be custodial staff, business office staff.
Yep.
Teachers associates.
Associate associates.
Buster drivers.
And this, we would approve tonight for two years, so they could do it this year or next year, is that correct?
That is the proposal I would make, yes.
So a potential cost of $85,000 per year?
Total.
Total, okay.
We've had a lot of discussion about this, I think it's important that, this is not just tonight, this has been going on. Mr. Carter's contact, I think all of us, you know, individually and we've had, you know, discussions.
Summer retreat.
It did, summer retreat, and so, the teachers, the non-classified, was a cost savings to the district. This is not, this is an expenditure, this is not going to save the district money. And so if you're at home watching this and it's your tax dollars, I mean, there's, you know, concern, but, but what makes sense in my mind is, one, we can afford it, you know, this is sustainable, we have the money. As Mr. Carter said, we want to, we want to retain and recruit the best employees we can and this is, you know, this just builds the reputation and rapport with, with the people we have. If you look, you know, if you look at our buses, if you look at our facilities, I mean, it's the best in state, I mean, this, my uncle who taught for 40 years, you know, came and visited and we walked through the school and he says, wow, this building's what, like 10 years old, you know, and I said, no, you know, it's, Rick would know how old it is, but, but it just goes to show we want the quality people. So by spending $85,000, I mean, if we have quality people, we're retaining, you know, we're saving money for the school, you know, in different ways, not, maybe not directly, you know, you just can't put your, you know, tangible, but it's, it makes a difference. And so I, I think it's the right thing to do, you know, when we've done negotiations and we've done, you know, looking at salaries, I mean, we've mirrored sort of the teachers, you know, the non-classified to the classified and this is just, again, it's not a policy, but it's kind of what we've done as a board over the last probably five to 10 years and so this is just doing it, and I think it's important too that Mr. Carter brings out, this is not a policy, this is not setting a precedent, this is, we're looking at the big picture of where we're at, you know. It mirrors what we did with the non-classified staff and it's, in my mind, it's the right thing to do. You know, especially when you look at some of these retirees that are coming up and what we're going to, even after we retired, maybe what we'll ask of them too, you know, as far as, you know, their expertise on different things, so.
My concern is, is the equitable nature of it, so it is not a policy, right? Because that's hard to set and be sustainable, right, which I think we've all agreed on. But in five years, maybe we're not in this financial position and we've got three or four individuals that have, you know, served the district for a number of years and done some phenomenal things of what we have in the room tonight, right? And we're not able to do this, you know, to me, that's, that's where, it isn't terribly equitable and so I know we've had a lot of discussions and all the others, but I'm still kind of offensive because I see the, like you had said, Brad, we passed that from an early retirement program for the teachers, it was certainly a cost savings to the district and made a lot of sense. And in this case, it's an expenditure, I personally don't necessarily see it as a retention or a recruiting tool. It's kind of a one-time deal and I'm seeing it more as a, it helps individuals, I don't necessarily see it helping the district. So that's, and that's not just like anyone who's been with the district for a number of years and all of the contributions that everybody has made, you know, and have been phenomenal service. But I also look too at the retirement program in general, and our VIPers and contributions and versus kind of the personal business sector. And, I mean, we have a really nice retirement program for our people too. So that's, again, that's kind of where I'm standing. Other suggestions and feedback?
Yeah, I think it's important to, I mean, we've had these conversations, I mean, this is not something that we've, and I don't think all of us here at the board table probably see exactly, I mean, I see your argument, I think it's, it's good. I mean, it's $85,000, that's a bus, you know, that's other things that, you know, we could be doing, but it is paid out of the management account, you know, which we have money there for, I mean, I'm not an expert in private sector, but I know, I mean, it's just, if you have a good year in business, you know, you can pay out Christmas bonuses, you know, and that may not be something that happens every year. I, I, I mean, you can make an argument, I just think it's the right thing to do at this time. We can afford it, you know, it's not my money, it's not anybody's money and we're spending the tax, you know, people's tax money, you know, and we're giving it away, but I think it's, I personally think it's the right thing to do at this time, so.
I want to speak to you, you know, I mean, we had teachers retired a year before the early retirement.
Yep.
You know, so that, that happens all the time and, you know, and it's one of those things that, you know, these classified employees are the ones that probably aren't recognized the most, you know, I mean, they're the ones that are, you know, are working with those kids and they get hit and kicked and spit on and bit, you know, and everything else and our custodial staff are the ones, you know, cleaning up after everybody and, you know, after they leave. I wouldn't want to drive up the bus for nothing, you know, I mean, I just, I, you know, I mean, it just, and, we talked about, I know Jay mentioned one time, you would rather reward them and pay them more while they're here. And Joe made a great point, our, you know, especially our special ed budget, we're in a deficit every year and it just, it's hard to do and so I think this is just a great way of, you know, instead of letting the door hit them on the way out, you know, kind of, you know, hey, thanks for what you've done, you know, we appreciate what you've done for us for the last 12, 15, 20, 25 years and, you know, just kind of a, you know, little bonus at the end of their career and, you know, and hopefully we are able to do this another, you know, five years or so, you know, and recognize, you know, those people that are here and, you know, and it's one of those things that, you know, I know especially in the associates, there is a lot of turnover. Maybe if they see this, they stick around for longer and, you know, we don't know, but there's that possibility, I guess, so.
I appreciate all those comments, because like you said, I think these are staff that don't necessarily get recognized, you know, and hopefully, as a board, if money's there, then we can continue to support and work.
As Mr. Carter mentioned, sorry, as Mr. Carter mentioned earlier, we will, because of the school finance formula that promotes equity across Iowa, you can only do a cash reserve levy to a certain percent and because we will not be able to do that in the future, then we'll do the cash reserve levy into the management fund to assist paying retirements to teachers and or classifieds. That's how the process works. And we will have to put money in the management fund, that's a reality. And we can't put it in the general fund because of the formula, so that's a reality also. And Sunday, if we wanted to and the management fund is back surplus and no more retirements, we could take the money based on the formula and put it back into the general fund if needed. But if not needed, it lowers taxes, which is always a good thing, in my opinion. The other part that concerns me somewhat is, and I'm not concerned about age of the other people, is I still believe that it's a personal choice, but I wish we could do more to keep people employed in the districts because I still believe people in their 50s and 60s are quality people, they're strong, have leadership skills, and they should be the leaders of the district. I'm not saying we're, I'm not sure how to say it, they should be at the peak of their careers at that age level. And I know we put the package out there and 58 years old, it's a personal choice to retire, but the leadership we're losing. Be it a teacher, a head custodian, a head cook, a teacher associate, concerns me because those are key employees in the district, that's the part that concerns me. I wish we could put more emphasis on keeping people employed in finance if we have to run the offering retirement packages. It's a, it's a double-edged sword.
It is.
There's no easy response to it, but they should be at the peak of the leadership in the district.
Yeah, I think, Tom, you're right, you know, 20 minutes ago, I just talked about 192 years of service, that's leaving our district, that's, you know, I congratulate all of those people when they apply, but we're taking great people out of our district, which I think is why having programs in place that the board has control over is very, very important so that we aren't driving people from our, our, our school. So I agree 100%, you have to be very, very careful about what you're doing and how you're doing it so that, that doesn't, doesn't happen. And the last thing I would just say to this guys is, you know, I think something that's important to me is, you know, where do we want to be as a district, you know, where do we want to be booked at, are we a great employer? What are the little things that we do for our district to be a great employer? You know, Jay made a really good point, I think he actually made it at first at our retreat, I wish we could just all pay them more, right? You know, but because of the school funding formula, general fund versus others, that's not something that's sustainable for the district. But this is something that we can do to show that we care as an example of being a great employer. And I think that's an important, important message for all of our staff.
I want to thank you all for the discussion tonight, I know we've had this discussions for, since the retreat and I know that we've got the program in front of us, the show's out late for us, so if we want to move forward with it, I do need a motion then to...
I think it's important to note that, I mean, with the number of people and $85,000, no one's getting rich. No one's winning the lottery with this, I mean, it's, I think that's important to stay, it's, not one person is getting $85,000, you know, it's, you know, so.
We make a motion to approve the early retirement proposal.
For classified.
Classified, yep. Yep, do we have a second?
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the classified retirement program that's laid out in front of us tonight. that's laid out in front of us tonight. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Tom. All opposed, opposed, none, so motion carries. All right. Our first reading of the 300 series.
Yeah, the first reading of the 300 series. Again, in the directions, you know, we go to the board, the school website, click on district, click on school board, you can see the 300 series. We'd like you guys to go through the 300 series, to analyze, to look at, to ask questions, make suggestions if needed, and that's something I'll do as well. The 300 series deals directed with administration. If you see anything in there, questions, ideas, send those to myself, and we'll get those organized and ready for a second reading. No motion needed on that.
Yep. All right, we'll move into personnel section, and I don't believe we have any new contracts.
We don't have any new contracts. Mr. Jacobson has interviewed some lower-level coaches, waiting on completion and background checks. We'll bring some of those to you next month. I will tell you, we have interviews that start Monday, a week from today. We have a couple of different interview groups that are going next week, and I think we've talked about, we'll hit that thing really, really hard in the next month. We have holes for us to fill, and we'll work hard to get the best people in the district.
Great. Resignations, we do have a couple to look at.
Yeah, we have two resignations. Diana Haynes as our middle school volleyball coach, Pen Zuber replacement, and Brooke Bonley from our middle school softball position.
Motion to approve the resignations. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Scott. We have a motion and a second to approve the resignations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Before we get to adjournment, the only thing I didn't get to say right at the beginning, I wanted to thank the elementary buildings brought us in pizza tonight, to thank us for board appreciation, and want to thank the elementary schools and staff and everybody for that. It was wonderful, so.
Thank you, it was delicious.
Yes, it was very good. So, and again, thank you guys tonight, wonderful, a lot of good work done here tonight with this agenda, and a lot of good discussion, so. Need a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, be hard adjourned.